We call May eleventh meeting, twenty twenty of the Crewe Town Council order. He's down to be a home affair. Father in heaven, we seek your blessing as we continue the business of the town. We've just passed the Saturday fifth anniversary of the end of the Second World War. We wish to remember all those from Crewe who served and sacrificed, many of whom did not come home, many of whom came home with wounds unseen. We want to thank you for providing for us during the COVID nineteen epidemic. We seek your blessings and we move forward. In Jesus' name, amen. Flag the ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a consent calendar. You have events for March ninth, twenty twenty, regular meeting, April ninth, twenty twenty budget work session, April sixteenth, twenty twenty work session. We have the bill sheets and the additions for April and May. That is on the consent calendar, considered routine, it will be approved by one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar at the request of a member of council. It may be voted on separately. Well, this is a pleasure of council.
I can motion accept it with conditions.
All right, Mr. Knight, fix the motion.
Do we want to make the correction on Billy being present on March ninth?
We need to make them, yeah.
Do we need to make that correction?
You corrected it.
We corrected it.
Okay.
I was wondering if I was losing my mind.
He walked up long time ago.
Okay, we have a question by Mr. Knight, a second by Mr. Siskin. Go P A nine, hold the table, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by like sign. What's your care? Next we have a public hearing for the F Y twenty one budget. Mr. Thor.
Ah, yes, I'm the mayor and council. I'm just going to give you a very, very brief summary of the budget. Um, town councils, F Y twenty one general fund budget totals two million, one hundred seventy thousand, eight hundred seventy-six dollars. Includes the twenty-three cent per pack cigarette tax increase. The cigarette tax will be fifty cent per pack effective July first, twenty twenty. Terms of war fund budget, uh, your F Y twenty one water fund budget total of one million, ninety-six thousand dollars. Sewer fund budget total of two million, two hundred ten thousand, three hundred seven dollars. And cemetery fund budget total is eight thousand, five thousand dollars. And I did, would like to note that I did not receive any comments from citizens prior to the meeting on the proposed budget.
Uh, I will point out once again, you chose not to fund the police officer. And I know that we had a lot of people coming to council to fund an additional police officer, so, I mean. I, I don't know.
I, uh, personally believe that we have deputies on duty. We probably wouldn't need that. That was when there was a lot of crime happening. Obviously, we've got this guy out here now, but, um, you know, it, it's. Think with scheduling.
Well, we still have two officers on duty at night, correct? Okay. Okay. And that's the limit there. Okay, good. With that in mind, what is a pleasure? Well.
Yes, no action required.
No action required at this point because we have no comments. So we pull up to the next meeting and we'll figure it out to back meeting. All right.
Just a, I'm sorry, a quick question about the, uh, budget. Um, none of the, uh, reserve funds have changed, correct? We still have the, uh, derelict building reserve fund and all the other reserve funds? Okay.
We did have to pull some money out of that line item for the current year to reduce that down.
Nope, that's fine, good. But I know in, uh, in past years for the, uh, uh, derelict building, excess funding was rolled over into that fund.
Has a lump still been taken, showed up yet?
Not, not yet.
Okay. This is about this time that it shows up, I think. I'm not mistaken. All right, uh. Any questions on the budget, anybody? We go to the mayor's report. I have not informed the report, uh, uh, I didn't write anything up, but I have been touching base with, uh, county. Fairly, you know, two, three times a week normally, just checking on the, the P P E situation, the COVID nineteen thing. Uh, trying to make sure we're able to do delegates, uh, as a mayor. But I talked to Ronnie Ror for General Postways generally. And, uh, right now, according to them, they get, uh, social, the emergency services are getting everything they requested. So they've got enough stuff, P P E, and Johnny Shoot even told me, he said, he said, if I run out, I know where to get more. So they're, they're talking to each other to coordinate some sort of case of going on. Uh, I reached out to all of the ministers in the town of Crewe and, uh, spoke with almost all of them, maybe one or two of this. Uh, and, uh, their congregations have not really had any issues, believe it or not. They, they have all adapted to doing their services online, they're doing the parking lot, uh, piece, uh, nobody. They don't have anybody that's, that's following the academy going ahead suffering because I, again, doing, trying to do due diligence. I wanted to make sure that, you know, that it was something that we needed to do, we were doing it. But, uh, there was, uh, one or two issues that one of them had with some congregants, but it really had nothing to do with COVID nineteen. It was, it was more cat and fever on one of them, but it was anybody who had already had depressive issues or, or do other things. We, uh, I thought about doing the day of prayer and, uh, I only had, just did it rather than trying to call everybody. I paid for that. Yeah, coordinated with the other mayors and we did it in our mayor hats, our, our leadership hats rather than trying to call council together and have a vote and all that. Okay, buddy. We felt like it was something that needed to be done and, uh, to remind people that we're very fortunate. Even though we have COVID nineteen in this area, we're very, very fortunate. It could be much worse, uh, for us. Other than that, I don't have any, anything, uh, to add. I'll ask you any questions about anything.
Hey, to reflect on what you were seeing, talking to the ministers. Our church unit's got a renovate going and generally out, the phones at least get three, four plus phone calls a day. Ever since the stuff has, uh, ever since that stimulus check has really worked.
Well, it has, and, um, um, there's, there's a lot to be said for that. The other piece is that people aren't getting out to spend money. And, and when they're staying home, they're saving money or they're spending it on essentials. You've got a lottery ticket.
It's good exit, they're normally.
Oh, no, they're still buying.
Just buy a lot.
Oh, God, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Okay, are you, more or less?
More.
Really?
Yeah. I mean. Oh, God, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, alcohol, lottery tickets.
Have a little.
Um, I, I will state this, um, there was a law going to effect for the slot machines. Uh, they're going to start charging July one a twelve hundred dollar per machine tax per month. Um, ours are gone. So, um, but, uh, that.
You had it.
I had to. But we, many months, we didn't even break even with it. But, um, I know there's a business in Blackstone that does phenomenal with, um, like, it's like a regular old casino up there.
We can't, we can't tax that though, so that's not a locality taxable thing.
No, no.
Why is that?
Yeah.
All right.
So, uh, but, um, but yeah, that, that happened and, um, I, I will say something to the COVID nineteen thing. Um, our supply chain is suffering, um, because, uh, no subways in the area got any mayonnaise last week. I mean, I called Farmville, Blackstone, everywhere. We actually running out. I had to call, um, and, and order it from one of our other suppliers, but with our subway order, half of the items that we ordered were tagged in orange, saying we may or may not get them. And, uh, I do know as a guy that belongs to our club that runs a, a cleaning company, processing plant. Uh, cleaning company, he's a supervisor and, uh, they had, uh, one plant had three hundred and fifty employees. They had seventy-two came back positive for COVID. They shut down. Uh, he's got Virginia, North Carolina processing plants, everything from dog food to Tyson to Smithfield. Um, those processing plants are getting hit pretty hard because they're put in like cap. There's no, no space for them to get apart, so. He said they've got a lot of their facilities that are shutting down for two or three weeks. Um, the Cigarellos, I can't get them. Their plant has shut down. They're in Puerto Rico. And they've shut down due to the, uh, COVID, so I can't get that. Huh?
I'm a Copenhagen.
Copenhagen's all right right now.
No, but we've got actually that somebody that can provide a, uh, Cigarello.
Yeah, but, but there is, I mean, as far as, you know, the food service goes, we are having issues of unavailable. And, you know, unavailable stock and everything.
Okay.
So.
Good cost.
Mayor, um, just on the, uh, on the subject of COVID, um, I saw today that the governor will be allocating, money to localities, uh, so we may want to reach out to the county and see how much we can get and how we can spend it between now and December thirtieth. For, um, it all has to be spent for COVID nineteen related expenses, but I'm sure there's ways we can.
Make, like, make it some fire truck?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, or move money around from, you know, shuffle things.
Okay.
It's all punchable.
With that in mind, we move to the town attorney's report. We've got the report. Any questions? For the town attorney.
And thank you all for your patience. I was outside on a Zoom meeting with another locality while they were in closed session. And thank you all for not doing Zoom meetings. It was.
Zoom meetings?
Yes.
They're actually, I've, I've participated in a couple of cocktail hours with Zoom.
Could turn into a Zoom.
It's all I've been doing for the last six weeks. Uh, can we add to, um, for, two, uh, two derelict buildings for, um, looking into, uh, the garment factory. I know that we've sent information to, um, one of the individuals who's a partial owner. Uh, and then the, uh, the old hotel here on the, uh, the corner. Um, I guess that was sold six months ago.
Wow.
My mayor was at the auction, I believe.
The, um.
That's who was.
Well, they thought Bagley bought it, but, uh, not Bagley, um.
Parker.
The Parker girl is the one that bought it. She lives in Virginia Beach.
Yeah.
Cause we thought, we thought Yvonne Wilson was the one that bought it.
And she runs a nonprofit, correct? Parker, that's what she.
I don't know what she does. Yvonne Wilson does.
Yeah, but they, they work, she works out of Virginia Beach, I thought.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking about it. Did you get a chance to call the school board on that building over here? No, not yet.
That's the one I thought.
Well, that too.
That's on the list too.
Okay.
I know, I know there was a letter sent.
A lot of these issues are interconnected, so once you start the ball on one, they're going to point to their neighbor, point to their neighbor, point to their neighbor. And there are other issues with grass at the town cuts at the school board and so it's an unravelling onion. That's why I think we need to think strategically with what we want to do ultimately with those properties.
I was approached by Larry Williamson at the post office about this building, the Nollywood building. And then I told him that it was in no worse shape than the garment factory was in. So.
Go, girl.
Well, I mean, they, they can point to their neighbors all they want, but at the end of the day, that doesn't excuse their, um, bad behavior. Um, I will say though, that the old hotel, I, I, I think we should at least just inquire as to what her plans are for. For that. The garment factory though, I mean, we've had complaints and apparently there's snakes and I don't do that. It's.
I had a complaint with snakes.
Had a complaint about the old drugstore today. Man said he'd been living here two years or more and said they have done nothing with it and it's a ice hole for downtown.
Well, that's.
Yeah, that's the, uh, the old hotel.
Yeah. And somebody mentioned that to me too, talking about that they saw the pigeons coming in and out again. Cause they did board those windows up at one point.
Jeremy, Jeremy had them boarded up.
Yeah, well, and now the pigeons have, I guess they found a new way to get in and out and, um.
When they spoke, they were in the.
Well, the ho, the hotel building is in that historic information, so there may be some.
Absolutely. Well, which is why for that one, I'd ju- just inquire as to what their plans are and how fast they can get those, uh, the scaffolding, the, the, uh, the cones and the caution tape out of there because that's the, uh, that's the biggest concern.
Yeah.
You got any questions? Get all of them. All right. Good deal.
I, I will say a positive thing though, uh, Roger Daniel bought the old Shava building.
Good.
And I've seen them doing some work there, um, improving that building right there beside Ellington. So.
Yeah, he fixes his sign outside of his, his building.
Any questions for the town attorney? No questions for the town attorney. We'll move on to committee reports. Finance committee, Mr. Denson.
Oh, thank everyone for working on the budget. We should have a new one.
First off, any questions for Ms. Denson? Very good. First, Mr. Reed.
No report.
Any questions for Mr. Reed? Okay, community development, Mr. Bowman.
Uh, nothing.
All right, any questions for Ms. Bowman? Economic development, Mr. Miskiewicz.
Nothing at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Miskiewicz? All right. We move on to new business. We have the USDA rural development funding applications for the police vehicle. Mr. Thor.
Uh, yes, I'm the mayor and council. As you're aware, a police car is included in your proposed twenty-one budget. Uh, I did recently submit a application to rural development for financial assistance to purchase that vehicle. Basically, you do have a resolution that was required by USDA and basically grants me the authority to sign documents. And, uh, in terms of public comment, the discussion of this item at tonight's meeting was advertised on the town's website. The public was provided an opportunity to submit comments and their questions on this item prior to the meeting. And their comments or questions will receive and, uh, asked to be adopted the attached resolution.
Okay. Any questions for members of council?
Yeah, we, are we, we're still getting these two police cars that we got a grant for, correct?
Correct, yes.
This, this would be the third one, right?
Right. The idea is to get them.
Rotate them out.
Start rotating them. Those, I think should be here in August-ish.
August, okay, good job.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. I'll second.
All right. Ms. Denson has prayed the motion. Ms. Bowman has seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by like sign. Motion carried. Give me the sentence. All right, next item was commercial trash collection charges. Mr. Miskiewicz.
Thank you, mayor. I was, uh, approached by a business owner, Justin Dalton of A J Produce. Um, as you know, they've been doing, uh, they, they've had a significant increase in business, uh, as a result of the, uh, the COVID nineteen crisis. Uh, and they've been, um, well, just because of their increase in business and increase in, uh, trash. Uh, and they've been, um, they're, they're being charged, uh, according to the ordinance. Uh, twenty-five dollars for each additional, uh, trip beyond their, I believe there's two, uh. Three.
They're picked up three times a week.
Three times.
Two dumpsters.
Okay.
They have their own and then they use one at another business.
Okay, um, well, they're, they're being charged twenty-five dollars per additional trip. Um, given that they're a critical business, uh, that they're in the efforts of trying to expand into a full-service grocery store. Um, and that they've gone above and beyond in, uh, in helping out the community for, uh, throughout this event, uh, the event, delivering groceries and such, uh, and having inadequate supply. I mean, we've never had, uh, shortages like you see in other places, uh, supply chain shortages and essentials. Uh, I would ask that we waive the twenty-five dollar, uh, the additional twenty-five dollar charges, uh, since, uh, I guess when this event started, uh, until the end of COVID nineteen for A J Produce.
Um, I asked the town manager to prepare the document. Did you see it in there? Would you be able to read it right now?
Uh, yes, um, I did, uh, just put, uh, some very brief information in your packet here, just trying to outline any things the customer on this thing is correct. He, he is doing additional business, which is great. I mean, it's fantastic. It's fantastic for him. It's fantastic for the town. Everybody wins. Um, and he does have one dumpster that he uses.
Is that his dumpster? Does town run it or is it his dumpster?
That, that's his dumpster.
One up for me.
They did, uh, Exxon, I believe, took their dumpster later day. They looked, uh, a different way of doing things, but, uh, I think he has been using Exxon's dumpster as well.
Exxon of Perks.
Ellington, you know, Ellington's the Perks Corner market.
Yes, Perks, isn't it? That's why it's all the trash.
Right, Perks.
Okay.
Um, and you, and it is correct. Then the, in the town code, there is a twenty-five dollar fee for each additional pickup beyond the regularly scheduled route. Um, so, you know, my way of thinking, when it's in the code, I don't have the authority to waive that only, only you, Mr. Counsel. And he's not, um, this in the economic hardship, he's actually doing more business as a result of this increased business. So he's, like I said, getting more revenue, town's getting more revenue, everybody wins. Um, he's, he's got increased economic activity, so I, I think the right thing to do is to continue charging the fee. Cause I, and I believe he said he was had precedent if you start going down this road of waiving fees.
Does, does another element to this, uh, it would suggest that one of the requirements for the cardboard boxes is that you're supposed to cut them up. All right, and you put them in there and you get more in there and you cut them up. And, um, did he, did we cut them up or they're, I mean, they're not cutting them off of it?
We don't break them down, no.
I, I spoke to Justin as well. He approached me, um, with it and I told him I would not also speak up for him. I mean, I, I respect him and for what he's done for the community. Um, I did take him, you know, a box cutter and say, look, you just cut these down. Because I, I see both sides, okay? I see his need. He's got to have somewhere to put his trash. But I also don't think that the town employees need to be picking this stuff up, 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 off of the ground either. Um, I think if he's doing the extra business, he can have somebody out there cutting the boxes up. I even told him I would furnish him a case of box cutters if he wants it. He said he'd have an employee out there all day if he did that, doing it. And I also.
Did you give the box cutters?
You'd take him, cut them up before you take them out there. Come on.
I offered it to him, but I also told him that we had two dumpsters. And we have two, um, we have two pickups a week, I believe.
Three.
Three? We got three. Okay, we've got two dumpsters. And then, you know, when it, they belong to us and when it comes time for the bottom to be rusting out, we have to fork out the money to get C and L machine to come and pick them up and weld a new bottom in there and all that. I did also tell him that he probably with his increased business needs to look into getting another dumpster or a larger dumpster. Um, but I do see his point. I mean, those, the meat boxes that he does have, they're wax coated boxes. They're kind of difficult to break down. It's not like a beer box where you can just rip, rip, fold. It's flat. You know, he doesn't, physically has to cut them. Um, I also think if we do it for him, we'd have to do it for everybody. And I did bring that up to him as well. Um, so I'm on both sides. I'd say if we did anything, I'd say offer him like two extra pickups a week. Just deliver, just empty it every day that the trash truck is out. But going two and three times a day, that's kind of, that costs us a lot of labor.
Mr. Reed.
Well, I've been thinking about it a lot too, cause obviously he brought it up to me as well. And I'm thinking that to me, I mean, he's ma- making a mess. Obviously, they could probably do a better job than that. He's probably got some of the responsibility on him to get another dumpster or something along those lines. But I feel like twenty-five dollars per pickup when they're coming two to three times a week. I mean, that's fifty, maybe seventy-five bucks a week. That's three, four hundred dollars a month. I mean, that's pretty high, I feel. So I feel like there's some kind of middle ground somewhere. Um, I know you mentioned twenty-five dollars is an arbitrary number. Somebody probably just pulled that, you know, out of the air. Does it really cost us that much to, 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 to do it? If so, then okay, but seems kind of expensive.
I was probably guess.
He could probably buy a dumpster for cheaper than he's paying us to do the extra pickup, I would think.
Let's just.
Um, is there any way we can get in touch with the, uh, landfill and see if they, or the county or whoever, to see if I can get one of the large containers that they have at the dump sites? And see if he can get in touch with them or we get in touch with them and have them set one of them out there. And let him deal with the county and county come figure it out once, twice a week, whatever it is. A whole lot bigger and maybe he can run it from them.
That's a good idea. I didn't think about that.
Ms. Denson.
Well, I too want to support them. However, I think we have an ordinance, so unless we're willing to change the ordinance, we have to enforce the ordinance.
And that's my thought. I feel like maybe we relook at the ordinance versus just giving him.
There are several ordinances I think we could probably look at down the road, but I, I think it's better to change the ordinance. Um, I do have a question. Has he started using the neighboring businesses', um, container since, only since the COVID nineteen increase in business? Before that, did everything he had fit in the?
For the most part. He still had, every once in a while, he would still have some of those boxes on the ground. But it wasn't an issue until this.
Point out, it's mostly boxes, but Tony, the parole officer director also says it's like meat and vegetable.
Yeah. Stuff.
Leaving.
Yeah.
Yeah, food, stuff, food.
Uh, at the end of the day, this isn't really the town's responsibility. Yes, we should do what we can to help as much as possible under the ordinance. But this is really on him. He should hire a contractor, private contractor, haul it away, take it to the landfill themselves or just get another dumpster.
Mr. Knight.
Don't you remember, um, Bockers used to have, uh, like a wire cage behind his building? And they broke the boxes down and put it in it. They paid separate to have him hauled off. And the way I look at it, um, this is unacceptable, the way he's doing things. It's, it's, it's his responsibility to see, and it's not only this stuff. You know, the way he's got them crates out there, they all just throws them out there, you know, and that's, that's not real presentable for the town. And I'm kind of bending toward, I'm going to support Brian on this table.
Say the same thing. You got the code to cover. Uh, I do know when I worked here, we had people that had the trash like that. They got notices, they, they were charged extra if they had to pick it up. Uh, in fact, they brought up the town picking up the trash. I know that the town, that people's housing stuffed the trash on the ground, people had to go get it. Town would not pick it up, so, you know. I, I say get the other dumpster. Or make some other arrangements, cause it's, it's a mess.
Okay, so what I'm hearing as a general consensus is that, uh, we, we approach, we haven't had any, get it out of the dumpster?
Uh, mayor, I've got a few.
Okay.
Points in response to some of the, uh, things that were brought up. The town manager brought up the, uh, the increased economic, economic activity and how that's good for both the, uh, the business and the town. I would rather see, and of course, that's great for us, for everyone in the, in the short term. I would rather see us give the business the opportunity to, um, use that increased economic activity and for the town to look at that in the, uh, in, in the long term. So as we know, one of our biggest concerns or one of the biggest concerns among, uh, residents is a lack of a full-service grocery store. If we allow the business to keep some of its money, even though there's this increase in economic, economic activity, they could likely allot that for increasing their business in, uh, becoming a full-service grocery store, uh, which we, uh, which we need. Uh, so I encourage council to look at it from a long-term. Uh, so I encourage council to look at it from a long-term perspective. Um, it was mentioned that, uh, you know, setting a bad precedent. I would, uh, I would counter that. I'm not worried about setting that precedent during an unprecedented, unprecedented, uh, health, uh, health crisis. So they're a business that's, uh, providing a, um, significant, uh, filling a significant need in the community and going above and beyond. I think that during this event, and only during this event, we can, uh, we can not have to worry about, uh, uh, precedent. Because I don't think that, um, hopefully we won't have another event of this, uh, magnitude. Um, the, uh, to the point where if we do it for him, we have to do it for everyone, I'd be willing to absolutely do it for every grocery store that comes to the town crew. Um.
Every grocery store or every business?
Every grocery store that comes to the town crew.
I can't buy that. I'd have to do every business. You look at your floor shops. They generate a lot of trash.
Well, sure, but they're not. Like, I would argue that they're, that we can prioritize, uh, businesses based on, uh, community need. And how crucial they are to economic development within the, well, I mean, that, we, we can, we, we can debate philosophy, but.
Well, I really, just depending on where you're standing. If you own a floor shop, for example, that's the most important business in town.
For you, well.
If you own a newspaper, that's the most important business in town.
I don't know. We'd have to ask Chris Gunnar, which is more important, his business or the, uh, or, or a grocery store?
Let me put it this way. When I was in the newspaper business, that was the most important business in town, because that's what fed my family.
I say I, I sell beer and cigarettes and lottery tickets, so.
Anyway, so. Um.
But I mean, I, I, I get where you're coming from and I agree with you. It's just my, my biggest standpoint is I don't think our town employees should have to pick it up off the ground like that.
Gonna finish my, my model up here and then I'll, uh, I'll get right to that. Um, I would, uh, to, to, to the, uh, to the vice mayor's point, and remember, I didn't have a, uh, didn't have a committee report, so. And to, to the vice mayor's point that, um, sure, we should absolutely look at changing the ordinance, but for now, during this, uh, during a declared emergency, I think that we can look at things individually and then absolutely look at the, look at the ordinance. Look at how much it actually costs us to, uh, to make these additional pickups, uh, things like that, uh, later on down the road. So again, not worried about setting the, uh, setting precedent. Um, and in terms of town responsibility, I think that is, it is the town's responsibility to, uh, take a long, ta- take a look at the, uh, the, the long term. So I would, uh, I would recommend, uh, a motion, uh, uh, that has, uh, has two components. Uh, first component is, uh, retroactively waiving the fees from April first, uh, through today. Uh, and second component is, uh, waiving the fees until July first, uh, so long as all trash is in a receptacle. And not, uh, out of the ground.
Well, I would rather address them separately. I, I would, I would not support waiving fees from April first. He's already paid them, I'm sure.
I don't know what you're saying. I don't think he's been well yet.
But this is the first time he's held up before council.
And, uh, I'll, oh, one more question, um, for the town manager. Uh, are there businesses that have been closed that generally have, uh, trash pickup that don't have trash pickup now?
I'm not sure I can.
Cars dumpsters?
Correct.
Uh, we would have to check on that. I don't, I don't.
The only one that I know, the only one I know that has a dumpster is Crew Floors. And they've been open.
I think everything in town has been open besides, probably style that, I mean, um, the hair places.
Yeah, no, but I'm talking with dumpsters.
Oh, yeah, they don't have dumpsters.
No, that's what I'm trying to say.
But they still pay trash pickup for whatever kind of receptacle they have?
Well, the community center cut the water off while we're closed, so we're not paying it. I mean, I would have thought businesses that truly do not have customers would think of doing those kinds of things.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know if they were closed unless they reached out to us, which I don't think they normally would unless they asked that the water be cut off.
Any further discussion?
I mean, I, I'm.
I don't, I'm, I'm concerned because we, we're calling it, and it is, a, a state of emergency now. I'm not sure this state of emergency is gonna go away July first.
That'd be here through September, all, August, September.
I think it might still be here next year in some form. So, uh, as a business person, I would say that's wonderful that the business has increased that much, so I assume the profit has also increased.
Amen.
How about we just be in the middle and?
I would make the motion that we cut the fee in half and then in the meantime, we figure out how much it costs them to put an accurate price on it as opposed to.
Yeah, continue to pay the twenty-five dollars for the normal stuff and then every extra one, ten bucks.
Alright.
That bothers me though. It hasn't been paid at all. Kids have been billing.
They have been billing.
Oh, it hasn't been bill. Okay. I, I can't bill. I don't know how much to bill him, so I have a bill him.
Yeah.
Alright, I, I've got an, another, the garbage truck runs every day during the week, Monday through Friday, correct? Okay, I would, uh, entertain offering him a free dump. This, to me, would meet in the middle to try to help him out and, you know, not have our guys having to pick up and shovel through all this stuff. Is, is have a delivery for him every, Monday through Friday, every day of the week. And then he only pay if he has, if we have to come back a second time. Do, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Who was it that brought up about the county? Stevie?
Yeah, the county. See, they got that big.
That's what, that's what the, that's what this guy up the street from me did. He, he had, he had, by the fact he's got one up in there. Usually they got it from, uh, the guy that run the, um, it's not, it's not, uh, the waste manager.
Oh, you're talking about Best Choice?
No, they, they, what was it? What was the garbage place up in, in Fall, in Rice?
It was Arenas.
Arenas. See, Arena used to, you know, supply that. Well, not, I understand, not the way county's doing it there. And this guy, that's what this guy does. He, he sets it out there, he throws all his trash in, well, he ain't gotta go back and forth to the dump. That'd be the most logical thing for him to do, is sit it right there on the side. All they gotta do is walk at the side door instead of running around, throw it in there, once it's full, and it, it's not that much expensive. It's not that expensive. It'd be cheaper than what he's gonna be paying us twenty-five dollars.
I don't think it's council's re- responsibility to make his business decisions.
I agree.
I'm pretty sure he, he can figure, he'll figure that out if, if this plan doesn't work.
Give him the options. Tell him about that dumpster.
So just to let you, Tony and I, I've discussed this with him a couple of times. Tony has too. And last time, we talked again today, but last week we talked and he said he was gonna look into hiring a private contractor.
Well, that's the.
Now, I don't know how definitive, that was kind of, I'm not sure how definitive looking to was, but that's what he said at the end of the conversation, so.
Well, and that's probably a wise decision on his part.
But see, a lot, a lot of businesses in the town crew that had a overload of trash over the years, I mean, even though they paid us the trash pickup once a month, they still had an independent dealer come in and, and, and contract and come in and pick it up. They paid extra to have it.
Okay, I saw a CFS truck at Family Dollar today. Um, anybody checked with Dollar General? Has Dollar General had an issue? Cause I know their business has been picked up as well.
I don't think.
They cut their boxes up.
They do.
They cut their boxes?
They cut them up right away, cause I've been, they're trying to find a few boxes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I see it outside all the time.
Yeah, but I mean.
I take it quick.
And, and I, I, I talked to Justin about this, and I mean, I, I wanna support him the most I can. I, I, I appreciate everything he does and I'm thankful that they're in town and that this is the closest, probably wherever we're gonna get to a grocery store. So I wanna support him, um, but, but I, I think that the people can do a little better with, like, I'm seeing a few boxes in this pile that I know, cause I've worked in grocery business too, that I know could be broken down. And it's not that difficult to break them down. And, um, I mean, I, I, my, my thought is offer him a delivery every day of the week, Monday through Friday. Since the trucks are already out, one deliver, one dump, as long as he don't have to pick up anything off the ground.
Wait, let me, let me explain something to you about the dump, about the garbage truck too. We've got one garbage truck that picks up dumpsters. The others pick up garbage.
Okay.
The ones that pick up dumpsters pick up Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
I get you.
So if you're gonna give, you know, what you're gonna do is.
So we'll have to get that special truck out two extra days.
Take that truck out twice a day, and that's only for one person. A individual, like, like say, for instance, you got a, you know, pile of limbs in your yard and we don't pick them all up. And you say, well, I wanna move. Well, give us twenty-five dollars and then we'll come up and get the rest of them. You know what I'm saying? And that's what happens to, to the citizens.
Yeah.
Not just businesses.
So on Tuesday, Thursday, if the, uh, the dumpster truck went and picked it up, it wouldn't have to go all the way to the landfill. It could just
Yes, sir.
stay there until the next day, either, uh, Wednesday or Friday.
It doesn't have to go to the landfill the same day.
No, but they say they don't wanna leave stuff like that on the truck overnight.
Food.
Well, they, it's, a lot of the stuff to get food in it too.
All this, this is trash. Y'all understand that this is garbage.
Old food and stuff.
Make a decision and move forward. We will sit here all night trying to debate what to do. You got an ordinance, tell the man, here are your options. You need to make it happen. Justin's family. I told him, this is garbage. Your business owner, it's your responsibility. This is the town. This is the town's responsibility. Here's some options for you. Figure it out. We, why, why are y'all sitting here wasting your time on this? Make a decision and move forward.
Now, what sizes are the, uh, are, are the, um, the current ones compared to the one in the, in county?
Uh, our current dumpsters? It looks like he's got a smaller.
He's got a six-yard.
Six yard.
He's got a smaller dumpster. Our, our dumpsters at Cruz Station are eight yards, bigger than these.
Eight yards, okay. And the eight yards are the, um, we, we talked about, talked in the county about getting in one of the other ones, a, a bigger one?
Uh, it's bigger.
That's up to Justin to do that.
Oh, okay. Well, then I, I like, uh, Councilwoman, um, Bowen's idea on once a day pickup and we can eat the, eat the extra costs.
But if it's twice a day, he gets charged.
Correct.
I mean, but that, that's.
He needs to break these boxes down, I'm sorry.
I mean, he, he doesn't need to break his boxes.
Sure, and that's a, that's a decision he can make and, uh, but yeah.
Yeah, well, if we don't go along with this, is he gonna move his business out of town? Is he just gonna close up? It's a cost of doing business.
Amen.
Yep. Alright, with that in mind, what I'm hearing, uh, consensus wise, is that, uh, we stick with policy as is. He has to break the boxes down and he needs to get another dumpster, uh, unless he wants, I guess, we, we provided dumpsters in the past.
No.
We don't.
Town crews never provided dumpsters that I know of.
Well, I'm taking, we have, when Justin had to get his dumpster repaired, we took the dumpster that the town has sitting down at the shop, took it over to his business and let him use it while he got his dumpster repaired.
So here we are, having a big old hissy fit, and there's a dumpster sitting down at the town shop.
Yeah, but you took his dumpster out there and had it fixed too.
He took his dumpster out there and had it fixed.
I thought, I thought the town took it.
Alright, alright, okay.
It's freaking trash.
I've got, I've got consensus unless anybody wants to make a motion.
Mayor, I've got two motions.
Alright.
Uh, and that was, that was energetic. Uh, first motion is to, um, retroactively waive, uh, A and J produce, uh, extra dumpster fees from April first through, uh, today.
Alright.
So I'd make that motion.
Alright, we have a motion from Mr. Stensavik to retroactively waive A and J's,
Extra.
Extra fee.
Pickup fees.
Extra pickup fees from one April till today. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion dies.
Okay, Mayor, I've got a second motion. Uh, and that is to offer A and J produce a, uh, daily pickup. So that's an additional two pickups, uh, per week at, uh, for the, um, from now until July one, and then council can reeval- evaluate, uh, on July one.
Okay, so we have a motion.
If they have to go back another twenty-five dollars or whatever.
Sure, so it's, it's two additional pickups.
The, the second time in that same day, then it's, and it's the twenty-five dollar pickup fee.
Correct.
Alright.
And that's only as long, like to the July one.
Okay, so we have an offer or a, uh, a, a motion to offer A and J daily pickup through one July, uh, at current cost, and if it's a second pickup during the day, it's twenty-nine dollars for the policy. Any further discussion on that?
Uh, and I'll also add that, uh, we, um, no, 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 um, uh, uh, ensure that all trash is in the receptacle.
Right.
Yes.
Re- require that all trash be in the receptacle, in extreme, exactly, right.
The, the extra pickups, he gets how many a week?
Three.
Two extra.
Two extra, so it would be five total per week.
And, and he's still at the twenty-five dollar fee.
Yeah, after the two extra.
How many times are they going?
So basically you.
So it's one a day, and then if, if they have to go back a second time in a day, it's twenty-five dollars.
So you're right. You're, you're, under this proposal, you will be giving them free, two free pickups.
It may be.
Fifty dollars probably.
In direct disregard to the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay, any further discussion?
Because of their essential status.
No, I'll just.
I just, I just saying, the ordinance is what it is. It's been that a way. Other people had to do the same thing. He's doing enough business where he can either get another dumpster or pay somebody to go out there and break the boxes down and do it like he's supposed to. And that's what ought to be done. It shouldn't be up to the town to do.
Okay, then I jump the gun. We have a motion. We don't have a second. Do we have a second?
I would second that one, just.
Now we're going to the discussion. Alright.
Any of you have a roll call vote?
Okay, roll, well, any further discussion? Anybody? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Stensavik?
Yes.
Mr. Abel?
No.
Mr. Knight?
No.
Mr. Stenson?
No.
Mr. Sisk?
Yes.
Ms. Bowen?
Yes.
There you go, Reed. Mr. Reed.
Yes. Well, wait, but you said reevaluate July one, right?
Yes.
Right.
Okay, I think, well, I guess I can't put a condition. I say yes. I, I vote yes. But I also think by July one, we need to have the, the ordinance rewritten to reflect, you know, accurate across the board.
Well, I actually think by July one, he should have purchased.
That gives us time, that gives us time to reevaluate.
Unfortunately, it doesn't give us enough time, because we would have to have to look at the ordinance next month and then advertise for.
I'd say July one would give him time to make other arrangements.
Okay, so motion carries for three. With that in mind, we're going to the public comment section. Tessa, any public comment?
I don't have any, thank you.
See if there's a public comment. Tiffany, you're already been there, so. Okay, uh, with that in mind, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Somebody second.
Alright, Mr. Knight, Mr. Abel, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
On both of our sides, alright.